So, the technical posts are in or the front entryway?
Yeah.
You know, we'll just see if the contractor fits us.
Maybe you start with so.
So. Um, you know, it's it's been an adventure. But uh. It is Richard Huntley who.
Oh, okay.
He felt the uh anyway, so he's so yeah, I mean, the technical posts are in and ready. Um, we'll just see.
Hello?
Hi.
Oh, you can hear us now.
Yeah.
I can.
I think we're set then.
I'm here.
We're recording, we're set, we're in business. There's a whole bunch of.
You want to run this thing remotely, Chris? You want me to do that?
Go ahead and run it from there. I think it'll be easier.
Yeah, okay.
I did want to mention one thing that I did not see our meeting on the town agenda website.
Okay, well, close the meeting after that.
It is supposed to be a poll.
It's supposed to be posted, right?
Yeah.
I think it was posted, but it never got loaded on the website.
Okay, does it?
Maybe Brett, you can follow up on that.
Yeah.
They had a lot of fun with the November election, so.
So let's call the meeting to order at four thirty-one, yeah. Number nineteen, we've got a quorum, I believe, no conflicts of interest they're aware of. Uh, there is one adjustment to the agenda fairly significant which Donna can walk through the uh kind of a discussion of the timeline moving forward. Um, I don't know where we want to do that. Um, we uh. Uh, I'm gonna get Carl back though, but uh. So.
Is it new business?
Yeah, I guess we can start with new business. Uh. Just I'm not sure what discussion on data is required if we're trying to be honest with you now that I'm looking at this. Um, I know that Donna's also got the draft of climate change. Well, so Kyle, what is discussion on data? Do you know what that is on the new business?
Uh, no, I know I have talked, Donna, I've reached out looking for data on our application, building permit applications, just that historical, I love that.
Um. Okay, um, so I have it.
Hey Steve.
Yeah.
Can I, you want me to talk about the data?
Go ahead.
So, um, I I have written in in a section on data. It's it's just an explanation of data. And the problem is, is that the US Census data and the American Community Survey data, which is an arm of the census, and the boundaries of Rangel Lee all are different. And so, um, the census data tends to be the zip code, which which also includes a lot of the plantations, but not all of Aquasic. And sometimes like there's there's different maps of the data. And so I've done a section, what what I was intending to talk about there was I did it, I did a section, which I haven't given to you yet, on the data because that stuff I just can't verify. What I I just can't verify which is which. And so I don't think that it makes it totally invaluable, but I think that we need to just be aware of that. And I'm um, I'm thinking that probably right now I've got it in the housing section. But I I, as I was working on it, I thought, you know, this probably needs to go in the introduction. Um, but you know, I'm just giving you a heads up on the data that it it's.
Are you talking the data from the housing that's like the population, the age, you know, spread, all that data?
It's any data that comes from not the town data. The town data is good. Um, but the data that comes from either the census or the American Community Survey. So that tends to be a lot of the population, a lot of the um uh, the housing, the housing data in terms of, you know, vacancy versus year round and, you know, those types of things. Not like the building permit data that you would do. I I don't question any of that. It's just.
Anything before three years ago, it's totally off for debate.
Well, then we need to say that also.
Yeah.
You know, so so I think you'll get it. Um, I'm I'm jumping ahead here, but that the housing section I would say is probably eighty percent done at this point. And I was and and I will get it to you soon to take a look at it. Um, and it's got that data section in there. And so just something to think about when you get that. I s- I think that it probably should not just be in the housing section. That's that's what I wanted to say about that.
What about the regional section, Donna? I mean, if if those um two data sources, the uh US Census and then the American Community Survey data, um, you know, capture more than just Rangel Lee, maybe that's where it belongs. And then you could just use the town of Rangel Lee's information in the housing area. Or as a side note, just say, use Rangel Lee's, you know, um, homegrown data as your first choice and then maybe supplement it with some of that other data points. But with a caveat that some of it might be tainted information, not particularly just focused on Rangel Lee.
Yeah, it you'll see in the section when I give it to you, I have maps that show the zip code outline and the the geographical boundaries. And then this other, there's this other area too, which I I can't really say what it is. So, um. Yeah, I I I think let's, well, I'll send it to you and then you can you can see it. And we might need to, we'll have to add something about the data from the town. And and it's probably good, like when you went, um, are you are you talking Carl about when you started the new, the new program?
Yeah, I need to say a year before that. We have good data, but once you go back, I'll say a year is fine to ten. It's the information is funny. I'll follow up the scope of what the project was without having to go and pull every property file and find an application.
Yeah, so I don't want to, you know, I'm I'm not saying that the data is useless, but I'm just saying that we need to, we need to understand.
The context.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all.
Yeah. Um, you know, I just leaked for us, I want to go back to the uh meeting minutes. We should get approval of uh a review of the meeting minutes from the previous meeting.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October sixteenth, nine forty-four. That good?
All favor of that? Okay, so we're move past that. Um, now I know, Donna, a lot of this is discussion of some of the work that you've done, the revised draft of like resource coordination. Do you want to uh begin with that or when do you want to talk about moving forward? Say that to the end?
Well, what I want to do with those, all of those chapters that are in number four, item number four, what I want to do is just accept the changes on it and clean it up.
Okay.
Has everyone had a chance to look um over all the edits to date so far?
No, no.
No, well, no.
I haven't done that resource yet.
Yeah. So, um.
Do you need a little more time with those?
It sounds like it, um, Donna, from everyone present.
I've I've looked at all of them. Um, I I it it's not that much to get through. I mean, my concern is that we stay on a timeline so that we can get this out or at least to clean the version with the red line as a back piece to the Board of Collectmen because they had specifically asked to get some chapters like rolling in so they don't have to look at the whole thing all at once.
So, under the four old business, do you want to establish a date that everybody goes through and puts their edits in the drafts?
Yes.
Yeah.
How much time do you need?
Do you need a week?
I'm okay by the end of the week.
By the end of the week?
I can get it in there.
All right, I could too.
I could too.
No, because I just think if you let me linger till next week, I'm gonna get your draft.
Friday.
Holiday.
Yep.
Okay, so um, that'll be, we'll get those final edits back. It'll be completed by Friday, November, the, what is that?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
No, twenty-second.
Twenty-two.
Yeah.
November twenty-two, Friday.
Well, why don't? So, so what are you gonna, if people read it, are you just gonna send me comments?
That's what I just wanted to say.
Yeah, okay, because at this point, I think if you started making comments, i- if you started doing things inside the document, then it's gonna get, it's gonna get messy because we'll have all these different versions out there.
Do you make comments in the margins? Is that what you're thinking? Just put comments in the margin on pieces that people make a comment on?
Well, I mean, we could do that or if you just want to send me. I, you know, I, so let me just back up here and say that one step before, once we get all of our edits done and before it goes to the the select board, there's this other step in here that we haven't talked about. And that's where I send it out to someone who does an edit on it for grammar and punctuation. And that's also when it will get its final formatting and style. Um, so that when it goes out to the select board, it's nice and clean and consistent. And so what I'm looking for is to you know, uh, so so I'm gonna need a little gap in time there to get that part done. Um, and the sooner I can get started on accepting the changes, the the better. So if you can just send me sheets and say, on this chapter, I think this, this, and this, and the more you can give me detail on, you know, the paragraph on a page or whatever, um, that's great. So what I, so the purpose of all of that was to, don't mess around. If you see a comma missing or don't mess around with that kind of stuff or a spelling error.
We're doing for context, not policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And and it's not that that stuff's not important, but that's, that will happen.
Okay, so it's specifically those three chapters on old business, regional coordination, water resources, natural resources, by Friday, November twenty-two.
And we have looked over as a um committee here, the Regional Coordination Program, the last meeting. You know, and we came up with quite a few edits while we were just sitting here, even though it was a super short meeting.
Right, and and now we also added to that list is the historic because you, um, I I think Steve, you have the final draft.
Yeah.
Right now for the historic.
Yeah, I still need to look at that last one.
I just got the last one finalized because I got all the information background stored.
Great, that's good.
So what's the deadline? What did you agree to a deadline on getting regional water?
Twenty-two, November, Friday. Three days. COB? Yes.
That's good.
Okay. All right, so let's let's then we clear that out from four.
Uh, one question, where's most current documents of those emails?
Uh, that's a good question. Is that in the uh?
Or is that the folder?
Regional already have read in front of us.
Yeah.
Um, Steve's gonna have to get the historic to us.
Yeah.
Or through Donna. And then water resources, we uh.
We have regional coordination, water resources, and natural resources, right?
Natural resources.
Do you want me to email those to everyone?
Yeah, if you could just send us all an email with the most current ones, then we can respond to that with any comments we have on the floor.
Perfect.
That way we're all.
As the bodies, thank you.
All.
Okay, yes.
Okay, yes, I will do that.
Okay, so uh moving on, new business, we just discussed the data. We have now a draft economy chapter, um, which it's got a lot of marketing already and uh. This is, is this the similar format to the the previous revised drafts, but this is just newly completed? Is that why it's new business? I'm not sure.
Well, you haven't, the reason I put it under new business is because it's, we haven't talked about this chapter yet. And we had talked about all the other chapters last last month.
Yeah.
So the format, the format is roughly the same. Um. We did, we did eliminate a lot of stuff on the regional economy. Um. And but but it's it's roughly the same, but I, did you see that that actually came in two documents? That the, there's just the recommendations, the the goals, the policies and and the um, and the recommendations are in a separate document.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And there was a lot of changes that we found, you know, in doing the research with this, with the two meetings and, you know, some of the data that came in from the state is that um, I knew I'm a driver for Rangel Lee's, get surprised, new movement instruction.
Open that. Shows up in the living room.
Right.
So Donna, do you want us to send you, send comments or questions on on the, or do you want to discuss it, you know, the economy, what what you've emailed, um, the economy background and and the economy goals, or do you want, you know, do you want any email comments from us?
Um, I I think we could have a discussion. I, you know, let's say for the next fifteen minutes, we talk about this. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Um, all right, so on page one in the economy background information, I've never heard Rangel Lee called an island in the sky. Um, I mean, it's been termed an island type community because of, because of our location, but I I don't find that reference relatable, but that's just me.
Okay.
I heard it somewhere, but it's not likely to use.
It's not.
It's a Native American phrase.
Okay.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, um, the other question I had, Donna, on the next page, on page twenty-eight, uh, the average weekly raise, uh, weekly wage. The average weekly wage in the area, um, um, has inc- well, has has gone up, I think in- increase would be better. But is there, um, is this from the Franklin County, um, wage averages, you know, is there, is there a number we can put to that? Um.
Like a dollar figure?
Yeah, like a dollar figure, like the, like the aver- you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to get some context.
It's up forty-two percent to two thousand dollars or fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's, um, because I, um, what page is it? Page, the second page, page twenty-eight, yeah.
Twenty-eight.
Just to come back.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I've got. I'm sorry, I need to.
Is that, um?
Second bullet down now.
Okay.
Oh, I'll look from everyone's.
Right through ones.
The total wages paid by occupation?
So it's, um, the average weekly wage in the region has gone up forty-two percent from twenty-nineteen. So it's like where, uh, it.
Where was it? Where did it go to?
Yeah, where did it go to? You know, is this a Franklin County average? That the Franklin County median wage was blah, blah, blah? Or is this a Rangel Lee wage? But it says region, so I guess I just find that statistic, um, lacking, yeah.
Yeah, need context. What what is the forty-two percent? What does it, what does it mean? Did it go from ten to fourteen or?
Yes, I just, that that just.
Then maybe where does that, if it is the Rangel Lee region, is there a separate data point that is Franklin County? And how does it compare to higher or lower? Did it go up in tune with the state period?
Right.
Did it not, right? Did it go up quicker?
Thank you.
Okay, let me, let me look into that.
Okay.
Donna, um, with all the graphs and so forth that's in this area and the strike throughs and so forth, I know that you and I had talked about this. Um, you know, maybe this committee could um help, help you out in uh presenting information in a, in a clearer way without the strike throughs. If we could just grab the last of the, um, you know, chronological data points, whether it's two thousand eight or two thousand twelve and then use that in the plan, but then go forward with new data, um, just as kind of a basis point. Maybe that's gonna make these, these uh all these graphs and and so forth have a a better shelf life, especially through the editing process. Because I know that track changes in graphs is a miserable beast to contend with.
Yes, it is.
Well, we talked about, we'd send a tracked copy. People wanted to see what was deleted and a clean copy.
Right.
So what I always do is, once I get everything with my changes done with the tracked, I sh- I switch it to clean and I finish the edit of the graphs and clean, and then it always works out. And then go back and pull the tracked one, the marked one to send. But I saw Cindy's question about the forty-two percent. Isn't that covered on page eight? It shows the number. Five forty-six to seven seventy-five, increase of forty-two percent. Under the occupation graph on page eight.
I see.
For the all industry, yeah.
Total all industries. That's where the forty-two percent came from. So maybe Donna, do you want to add his reference or reference?
Yeah, just be, reference the chart title, yeah. That would probably be good.
Chris, what did you say?
I said, reference the chart that's on page, on mine, it's page eight. I don't know what page it is with others. On page eight, it shows five forty-six to seven seventy-five, forty-two percent average weekly range increase.
Right.
So, to Cindy's question from before, and I wasn't sure what page that was on that she was mentioning. She said twenty-eight, but I couldn't see twenty-eight.
It's it's page two. I was working from the emailed um version, Chris, that's.
That's the email version I'm looking at too.
Well, I.
The one from the email she sent.
A couple of days ago.
Yeah, yeah. So there, it's on page two, we can make a footnote to page, to page eight, that bottom chart. Because it shows it right there. That matches up your forty-two percent under total all industries.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. I didn't make that connection.
No, that's fine.
And are we sure that those numbers?
Sometimes what I do, which is helpful, is if you open the navigation and use the find, and I typed in average weekly, it pulled the first thing from page two, and then the second reference was page eight.
Okay.
Use the go, if you use the search in Word for that. But I.
The math of those kept columns are correct, right? Some, it's, I don't know how it adds up to forty-two percent, but some of these things don't look like they add up. If you go line by line, some of this stuff. I don't understand, like food accommodations, the combination of food service went down three dollars on a weekly average rate, and it shows forty-five percent change next to it, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, that that should probably be more like four point five.
Minus four point five.
So that's important, how, yeah, to check the math on us.
There's others that were a little questionable too.
If if someone wants to check the math, I think that would be great.
Well, are you, are all these spreadsheets built in a separate thing and then pasted in, or how are they done?
Yeah, are they formulas or?
Because, because I do all mine with formulas, but these aren't with formulas. These are hard.
These are, these are tables. So I did, I did a percent change increase for each one of them. They they were not taken from a spreadsheet.
All right. And then we all, and then I'm just anal about this stuff, but it should be, um, you know, top cells, either all of them top cell or all of them bottom cell, all of them middle cell for the formatting. So you don't have up and.
We're not, we're not going for formatting.
What?
Take you.
We were told not to look at formatting, content only.
Okay. Sorry.
I keep you in line, Mr. Harwell.
Well, see, and and this is another one of those places where categories might have changed. You'll see, you know, there there was no professional scientific and technical services in twenty nineteen. And and so, but there was in twenty twenty-three. But that doesn't mean that there wasn't professional scientific and technical services, but it might have been called something different. So it's another, really, I think the most important thing is the first one of the all industries because I, you know.
Yeah.
Finance.
Yep.
Did finance insurance really go down or or, you know, has there been a shift in in how and what the category is? But, I mean, the overall is a tremendous increase. When you look at total wages. Hey.
Where does this data come from? You said it comes from the.
Uh, the main center for workforce research.
Data not available. Got your note in there.
Right, right. And and so, but I don't know why it's not available.
Well, and I think this goes back to Cindy's point that we were talking about is I caution us loading stuff in that that, you know, because people pick this stuff apart, I would rather say I would rather almost do the top line and not do the breakdown and say, for further information, refer to there and not get caught in the weeds.
I totally agree with that.
I, yeah.
Yeah, just say, I almost think stick with our bullet point piece and say for a future source on this, look at the main center for workforce research or again, we could look at appendixing some of this stuff. I just feel that as soon as we put this in here, it's already stale. I think we should talk more about the trends, but that's just me. But you tell me if we need more because of state guidelines, Donna.
No, 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 we're fine. I'm not worried about the state on this. Um, and I, and I think that's a really, I think it's a really good call because I I just, I just can't answer the questions. And it's not because I haven't tried.
No, I feel that when we have the absence of data, we provide a resource where the people could look for additional and future people who work on this plan. And I get nervous with the economic piece because it was such an anomaly of, I mean, I do, I evaluate. it was such an anomaly of, I mean, I do, I evaluate businesses and tax returns and commercial loans, and I will tell you. Looking at data from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-three, it is all over the map. Especially when you get into accommodations, food service. A lot of these things, we've got some spikes and drops. I just think it might not pet, tell the tell the perfect tale. And I just worry about us making two big leaps there based on, I, it's literally two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-three, in my opinions. Five years are really tough, tough data to.
Yeah, we're not suggesting that for the next five years, we're gonna see the same rate of growth. So it doesn't, hey, it really look bad during that odd period.
Yeah, that's, that's period of times in an anomaly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, it, yeah, and if you'd said to me three months ago, well, everything's trending there, fine, but I mean, we're watching the arrest, restaurant apocalypse, they're calling it in Portland.
Yeah, exactly.
And there's a lot of different things going on and, and the whole economy, we don't know. We just got through a presidential election. I have no idea where the economy is gonna be in six months. We go to vote on this. So my concern is I don't want somebody, whether it's in a select person or person from the public, trying to hang our hat on some of this economic data if it's kind of over the place. I think we should just talk in factual trends. But I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Uh, no, I agree with you, Chris, and I also think that the categories, um, the breakdowns are gonna differ from that source to data source. So it's better to have an overarching kind of capsulated picture of growth and, you know, two thousand nineteen was pre-COVID year. And so that, that's a good true year. There was nothing happening at that point, except for in Southeast Asia at the end of two thousand nineteen. Didn't affect this area then. Um, so there were some long years in between there, but there certainly was growth. I mean, it's on paper there.
Yeah, I mean. So.
You can notate in the narrative too, that the, you know, COVID years, you need to be thought in consideration.
But clearly COVID has changed some things that will not go back.
The COVID impact, yeah.
So to, yeah, to Wendy's point, those numbers were the numbers then, and they were the numbers point three, intervening years weren't necessarily reflective of that kind of growth going forward, something to that effect. Uh, my question, I guess, to move this along, would you want to add, Donna, this to the other three things? For us to look through, or are we gonna get, are we gonna finalize this like now? I, I almost feel like I have more thoughts on this.
I have one comment real quick. On page six, there's a graph or a chart, dude, pretending to total customers sales by quarter. Right, that twenty twenty-three number, should that total a hundred percent? Like the combination of four quarters?
Ye- yes, that is not a breakdown by quarter.
Wait, say that again?
What is it then? Consumer sales. It's great. Ninety-four kind of equates to a hundred percent. Two thousand ten kind of equates to a hundred percent. And twenty twenty-three has more.
So the.
That's correct. My intent looks like it adds up to a hundred percent.
Right, I just did roughly twenty, twenty, forty, twenty, the top one, twenty, twenty, forty, twenty.
I just, it would be good, it would be good thing to show the seasonality.
Well, that's, that's what I found interesting, but that's what I was looking at, but right, but peak sales used to be Q three. Uh, and now it's shifted to Q one, which was.
One forty-nine, no, one number, that's what you get.
There is that. Just so we know, we see now.
Oh, yeah, I can see how that's.
Right, so I read this, it's percentage of total per quarter, so it should equal.
It could just be a typo.
Yeah, it might be. One of the numbers might.
Let me go back and check because um.
And I guess that goes back to the chart above, or if that's true, right? The total sales in twenty twenty-three were is it, I'm assuming that's is that thousands or millions? No, it's in thousands, but it's millions, number sixty-five million, right?
Thirty millions, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so just putting context of what they know in the chart, but, but you go from, right, the ten-year period when this was last written, twenty-three million to sixty-five million, it's pretty significant. I mean, that's triple, right, sales?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to verify bu- both sets of numbers. Because if the total consumer sales in twenty twenty-three was sixty-five point six, then the four quarters of twenty-three need to add up to that, right? That's what.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, because it's a percentage. The chart will just a percentage, so we'd have to know what the sales were in each quarter divided by the total and come up with a percentage.
Oh, percent, oh, I see, yeah. Okay. Hmm.
Well, the question, the, the big delta on that is your restaurant lodging and your general merchandise. So I guess I'd be cons, trying to figure out. The lodging I can see because they've tripled the cost of that, so that's a straight face test. Uh, general merchandise, that's up like three thousand percent over the previous sales tax numbers.
Yeah, any, any data we have on that chart, right?
And those don't total across at all, so.
No, there's a note below that building supply and transportation are included in the total, but we don't have a breakout for it, so.
Yeah, no, I, I think I know where I went wrong on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But good catch.
I'm fine with using statistics and graphs as long as it all ties out, because those of us who are math geeks, it sticks out like a sore thumb.
So I'm, I'm thinking that you probably have more comments on this. Do you think that you should just um send them to me? In writing?
Sure.
Because I do want to talk about the schedule moving forward, and I do want to talk about follow-up public participation. Um.
Can I stop on this, when we get to that, uh, just to latch on to what Carl said earlier? Um, I think, would you be sending another, cleaner, another copy of this uh, economy chapter out with the other three? For our comments by Friday?
Just the current copy.
Or a current copy of it?
Economy, we're just laying eyes on, we have a little bit of extra time.
That's what I, I'd be too. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I could do it by Friday, but.
I.
I don't know. Back to Halloween?
Yeah.
Firstly, I think a Monday after Thanksgiving would be better, even though it puts us down a little farther. And I know the uh, I know the board's in theory anxious to get going, but and, and I'm with Wendy about I don't want this stacked at the end. It's an excuse to kick it down the road to November. So but I also think I'd like our first batch to go in to be pretty dialed in in order to not lose any face with them.
Right.
Yeah.
Hey, Chris, um, Joe's not here, but do you recall when this document needs to be available for the public prior to June in terms of legality?
I thought he said late, it's March, right?
March.
I thought it was March, but it isn't.
I think it's a tight, personally, I think it's personally, I think we had a pretty tight window to make this happen.
I, I, I can't hear what's going on.
Say that again, Chris?
I, I, I just wanted to say, if, if we could back up a step, I'd like to make one comment. I, I spent two days last Wednesday and Thursday, well, Wednesday night, Thursday and half the day Friday at the Maine Outdoors Economic Summit over at Sunday River.
Yeah.
And um, there's one person I think we should meet, call in to come meet with our board. I was pretty impressed with him, and that's the town manager of Rumford. He's, I don't know how he ended up there, but he's a really smart guy. And uh, he talked a lot about tax base and the things that they're doing and the efforts he's making there. And also the other woman that was there was um Tracy Perry, I think her name was. She's uh Native American and part of the group that was talking from Millinocket. And both of them, as you know, are mill towns that had a significant impact when, with the mill, which I think possibly you can equate to saddleback from an economic factor, a similar type of thing. And one of the things I talked about was that um, you know, the Chamber of Commerce fifty thousand dollar funding got voted down because people say there's too many tourists in town and a lot of challenges with parking and some of those things. And um, they have some pretty effective strategies be, um, that they've been dealing with with that. And the one thing the woman from Millinocket said, because she, I think, has a similar public where things were down for a lot of years. There's been some ups and downs, kind of like what we dealt with with saddleback over the past thirty, forty years, that a lot of people aren't coming out to comment, and they really did a huge concentrated effort to get public input. And the document they came up with that they've done is, is pretty impressive. And I think it accomplishes the thing. Now, we can go the route of let's check the box, get this thing done and get through it and be ready for June. But part of me, after walking out of that meeting and listening to those two communities, that it might be better to serve our community if we can find a way to roll up our sleeves and get really try to get some real more public input. I mean, ten people showing up at a meeting or twenty people showing up at a meeting, you know, and pulling our teeth to kind of get the business and chamber people. I mean, we had that, I thought that was a good event we did at the Rangeley Inn with the breakfast, but we, if it wasn't for the Rotary having their meeting at the same time, we'd have had nobody. And I just know that if we really want this document to work and to do it right, I just feel like we've got to find a way, whether that means we're knocking on doors and talking to people or just forcing some more input because I, I feel like we're all, we, we're a smart group here, the, you know, the six, seven of us that are working on this. But if we're really gonna get this thing to get passed at at the town level by secret ballot, we've got to find a way to penetrate more than the usual Monica's and those people that are always willing to input, but try to get a deeper layer there. And I'm not sure what the strategy is for that, but part of me feels that we've got to get that done. Otherwise, we're gonna go through all this process, push it through, get to June, and it's gonna get voted down. I could be wrong, but that's just my thoughts after being at that summit.
So Chris, are you gonna share that? How did you want to share that information that you gleaned from the um, from the Sunday River meeting as far as strategy moving forward?
Well. I really feel that we've got to find some way, and I'm not really sure how we get there. Whether it's setting up in Lakeside Convenience for over a series of weeks or sitting in sarges, or we've got to find a way to get this community more engaged in this process. I just think it's gonna bite us in the long process. There, I, but you know, if you guys think let's just, if we want to just kind of push through and get this thing done and check it off and assume that people are gonna vote it through, I mean, both those ordinances passed with flying colors, so it may just go right through, but there's a lot to this thing, and if we really want to make it an active working plan, I feel like we've got to somehow data mine better way than we have with the survey and me. And I'm not saying anything wrong, what we've done, it's just the participation has been depressing.
Well, one thing, Chris, that I'm working on, th- there's a couple of things, and, and I did want to talk about this tonight, um, that um, I, I haven't reached out to them yet, but I'm gonna talk to the Highlander to see if we can get the recommendations and some highlights of the plan um um, done up in the, the form of a newspaper, like the size of the newspaper. Um, I'm trying to get a cost. I'm gonna get a cost on that to see if that's a way that we have a document that's really easy just to hand out to people um, to get, to get their uh, feedback on it. But the other thing, uh, I talked to Joe about this, about taking the the tables that have the recommendations and, and having each chapter have this moving forward section, which is just a bunch of bullets, so it's really fast and easy to read. And then the goals and policies and the recommendations and printing them out on, on larger sheets and putting them on foam core and setting them up in places like the library and the town office and the, you know, so that people can go in there when they have a chance and see and see what's happening. I mean, it's always hard to get the public to participate. Um, it's easy to get them to complain, but it's hard to get them to, to participate in the beginning.
So let me ask a question. Let me just jump in on something. You know, we've got work that's mandated by the state. It's gotta be in a specific format. It's kind of clunky, you know, the public doesn't speak in the same kind of language all the time, but the most important thing that we need to know for the public is if they agree with the goals and the action strategies going forward. So the narrative, the write-ups, the detail behind it is less important than, here's what you're gonna vote on, this is what range you're gonna hold the next ten years. These are the issues that we've uncovered. These are the potential opportunities in, in world block, I mean, how we want to phrase it. But couldn't that be done in a, a nice graphical uh, way that would, would make it easier for a person who isn't immersed in this to, to want to actually look at?
Well, our current one has that, that, that action step format, that, you know, where it's the category, it's the, you know, recommendation, who's responsible, and whether it's ongoing, short term, long term, which I think you're right. I think that's what folks are gonna dial in on because one thing this group is missing is someone that's born and raised here, that brings that, you know, that perspective. I, you know, I've, I was, I was hoping we'd get that from the Board of Selectmen, but we're not going to.
Who's coming on from the board? Do we know?
Uh, Jacob's. He wasn't there at the meeting last night, so I don't know if he knows, but Jacob's uh, was um, voted in.
All right, well, what about, we, when I did this with the school, when we did the school project, I did what I called a USA Today version, which showed, first page showed where we're at. Second page showed what the needs were, and the third, uh, second and third page showed exactly what the needs were, the financial breakdown, how it affected the taxpayer, and then the last page, where we were going. And it, it was just an eleven by seventeen tabloid. It folded in half, it made four, eight and a half pages, front and back. And uh, that was a pretty effective tool to get out in the community for people to pick up, look at, understand. And I think what Steve's talking about is on the right track with that, that maybe we can do that contemporaneously, but still keep plugging away, chopping away at the state mandate stuff. And then, like you guys said, is these goals and these pieces and strategies, we we want to get people behind this so that it can get wrapped up and you know, make sure we're on the right.
I feel, I, I agree with you, Chris, and I think we got, you know, we've got this work we gotta get done so that we can create that document to go out. So, you know, you can't kind of do it concurrently because we're still, you know, trying to hit to the finish line on what we think the state's requirements are gonna have. Once that, we feel like we've got to that point, creating a, like you said, the USA Today version, which is gonna be more suitable to average people who aren't in this. Uh, we can then create it probably pretty easily. Uh, we can then create it probably pretty easily by making it, instead of using this language, like just in a way that uh, allows people to wanna read it and, and provide input as opposed to a hundred and fifty-two pages of whatever we're gonna end up with. So I, I.
And what we did with that for about a thousand dollars is I dropped that in every post office box in Aquasic and Rangeley. And it was pretty effective.
That's it, Donna and I were talking about that, that's the exact same thing, dropping something in everybody's mailbox. And it's, it's a nice colorful thing, it's here it is, let's go get excited about future and, you know.
We done it with the Chamber.
It's almost like a GMA, really, yes.
Yeah, we did it when we expanded the Chambers advertising funding, when we went from twenty-five thousand to fifty. I did the same thing, it was an effective tool, so that's one strategy for that. But if we could take these three or four chapters, I'll give the input and then try to have answers back to Donna on Monday and then Donna, how long will you need for time to process to get something together? I'd love to be able to hand stuff off to the select board for that third, third um, Monday in December, that'd be two weeks after the notes, is that enough time?
Not if you, no, not if you want if you want it to be formatted and gone through the editing and cuz I've gotta hand that off to somebody else and um, so, um, I, I don't think, I don't think that's gonna work. Um, I think the beginning of January would work.
Alright.
Can I just, I just.
Just getting one or two chapters?
I gotta create minutes of this, so I've got some questions about the dates here. So initially, we said that we were gonna get these, the uh, regional coordination, water resources and natural resources by this Friday, November twenty-second to Donna. And what was also just said was the Monday after Thanksgiving, which is the second of December, that's when we will all have enough time to submit edits to Donna for the economy, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then as a second or third piece of work, somebody else has to be tasked with creating a USA Today Reader's Digest bulleted, simple, gold presentation that is colorful and sexy and will be mailed to everybody within the zip code.
And that's for February.
That, that would be later, after
after we plow through.
Actually, we want to get all the tests together.
I just sent a phone call to Donna. To Donna for that, oh. Do we need it completely grammar edited, formatted before going to the select board, or do you wanna get it to them and give them a chance if they have any major edits before we do a complete final format added? I, I, I don't know the procedure on that one, but.
Well, I, I mean, to me, I don't know what version of Word doc you guys are using of those things, but that editor in there is pretty good and um, I have good luck with it and that we get it you know, ninety percent there and if Donna still wants to ship it out. But I'd like to get some content in front of this board in December, even if it's the second meeting in December, just to get, just to get the ball rolling. Personally, I don't think we're gonna get a lot of feedback back from the board, maybe we will, but uh, based on what I've seen with a lot of the things that come in through there. But um, I'd like to at least get something in front of them and then they've got the long, they've got the Christmas break to kinda dive into it and then we're still gonna learn is what, what they like and what they don't like as far as reviewing stuff, so I would say we do a clean and marked copy of those first three to have ready for the eighteenth and Donna can still send it out for formal editing once we have them review. I don't think it makes sense to send it to formal editing and then they hack it up again, we gotta send it back out.
That, that was my thought, Chris.
I think you could just run a grammar check.
Yeah.
Do, do our best with what we have.
I mean, ideally, the select board would have a workshop specifically for this, I, I don't see I don't see it getting the attention or, or discussion it deserves within a normal, a normal meeting agenda.
Well, we could.
Well, it's not going to.
Yes, we could, I think that's, I think that's smart.
Yeah.
I think we just start loading them with the content in there and then say, okay, let's schedule something in January for these first five or six chapters. Is anyone opposed to that timeline?
Um, so, so once I do all the track changes and get a clean copy, this committee does not wanna look at it again, you wanna just send it off to the select board?
We can have one more week between now and the third week in December.
Yeah, that's, yeah, definitely.
I, I, I mean, I, I don't think that the, I, I know that you wanna get something to them in December, um, I, but I don't also, I don't wanna rush it to the point where what they get hasn't been fully vetted.
Well, I think if we work from the format of like what we've talked about with some of the notes we gave you today, Donna, I don't care if we only send one chapter to them, but I'd like to send them something, so if you feel, even if we go back, you know, Steve's, the historical one and that one, maybe that's the first one that we ship out. I'd like to get it shipped out to start the process before the end of the year. Cuz I don't want them later saying, really wish you guys started in December, when we start putting the pressure on to try to get done for March, it's not a lot of meetings in time.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd almost like to see if we could get in the habit of sending them out one chapter a week as we get them in some kind of way to them and then then they can, once they've had three or four chapters, they can schedule the public hearing at their thought to meet with us to go over their thoughts.
What about what Cindy said about have us scheduling a workshop in January, even now? Just by then, might we have enough of this done to present it in January at a workshop or get them to die in January?
Yeah, I'd like to just get them, I'd just like to get information flowing across their desks. So, and then we can schedule, if you wanna pick a time for the workshop that we can propose to them, but they need to be at that workshop, I mean, the most effective workshop we did for chapter thirty-eight is when we put the planning board and the select board in the same room. We got more done in that workshop than fifteen other workshops.
Well, that's kinda what we're talking about, him and us at that workshop.
So I think we proposed to them, they just had their meeting, we asked Joe at their first meeting on December first that we would like to do a workshop with them and we can do it at their timeframe, so everybody look at your schedule and say, you know, let's do it that third Tues, that third Tuesday in January, cuz they're gonna meet the day after Martin Luther King, let's do it that Tuesday.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, let's have them schedule the workshop at their next meeting.
And whatever chapters we've gotten to them with a reasonable amount of time, we'll just start at the earliest chapter first and go down through, and then we can schedule a public hearing for the next next month, do the next. If they're willing to do it.
So, but they're not gonna be I mean, they're not accepting it, are they just, they're just being made aware of it?
Yeah, so the procedure is this, we do a draft, you do a draft, we review the draft, you do a revised draft, we review, goes out to the select board, select board provides input, we then take it back, revise it, we bring a final version for them to accept. So we.
So they, they accept it or they just say that it's ready for the town meeting?
Yeah. What, what I don't wanna do, which Wendy can attest to, cuz I've seen her have to do it, is I don't wanna be in a situation we've been in with ordinance and stuff like that, where I think if you get it earlier to them in the process, just to say all these drafts are to say, hey, select board, this is where we think we're going, we think we're moving in the right direction, is there anything in here that knocks you over that doesn't work? We're looking for you to do content, we're not looking for you to say this should be underlined, this should be double spaced, there's three period, spaces after the period, there's one misspelling, this is for content review, much like what we did, we're doing with the econ, economy one tonight.
Okay.
And then the final proofed one in there will be down the process further down, but and that can be in each public hearing, we can say, okay, this is second review of these chapters, we took your input, we made these adjustments, we can speak confidently about it. There may not be a lot of input from them, but there may be.
Okay.
But that, that way, they're not saying, whoa, 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 here's sixteen chapters, you wanna send this to the public? We haven't had a chance to look at this at all, we wanna, that's what we're trying to avoid in March.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I, I agree, okay.
Does anybody disagree with that structure?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are, uh, after the, uh, Board of Selectmen has an opportunity to review it, how many public hearings are we either required or should we have prior to going to town meeting?
Well, the public.
You need by.
Yeah.
The final public hearings won't be, when we have the version ready in March, then there'll be public hearings after that before June to finalize.
So, Chris, I gotta call.
Wait, that's weird.
So what I'm wondering is um, if there's going to be at any point in um, in this process, once we have the goals um, spelled out, that the, if, these goals go to the responsible parties for review and comment to come back to us for edit as well. So like the planning board, the code enforcement officer, the Rangey Region Economic Development Committee, the town, so these other, these other entities that could give some serious kickback and we don't.
They've been included in the beginning part of the writing.
Exactly, but as far as these, like, the wording of some of, you know, some of these ones on the economy have me cringy and I, you know, and I'm, I'm probably not even in one of the, or gonna be a part of one of the designated parties, I, so I'm just trying to head off any potential friction or.
Joe should be, Joe should be administering a lot through the staff review of anything that's supposed to be happening on that part in the board review, but I, I initially wanted at least a rough shot of the chapters to go in front of the select board before we sent out for additional comments from the other sections. Just to make sure we're on the right track, but we can do it however you guys want, I don't think there's any set rules on this. Other than the town has to adopt it in order for it to go to the state.
Right, and there's a thirty-day waiting period, you have to, from the date that whenever a public hearing is set until when the public hearing is held, there's a thirty-day waiting period by state law, that's it.
For the final version?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, so the select board would hold a public hearing on the document, there would have to be a thirty-day notice period of that and then I assume then it would go off to town meeting.
Right. Okay. We're closing in on five-thirty.
Yeah.
So I was suggesting that we have a Saturday meeting on the fourteenth of December to sit down and go over these chapters, like spend a few hours and just sit down, I'll, I'll come up and we'll just go through the chapters and make the changes, um.
That's a big community day, so it might be tough.
Is there, is there another time where we could get a block of time for everyone?
How many hours do we need?
Well, I was thinking three, three and a half hours, I mean, there's a lot to go through.
What's the community?
What's the community stuff, or?
Um, it's uh, they do it every year, why can't I think of?
Well, there's the big Rotary event, there's like six things going on that weekend. Second weekend in December. Always busy. I've got limited availability that day, but.
I don't know, but uh, I could be if it was a morning thing, like a nine to twelve, something like that, I could definitely do that.
It was, it's to go through the remaining chapters?
So what do you say, the fourteenth, nine to twelve AM?
Yeah.
If that works for the majority of people, I'll work out my schedule.
Alright. You were hard to spot. Most stuff is probably afternoon, we don't on Saturday, I think, well, I'm a little.
Do we start it, do we start earlier than nine?
Yeah.
You guys early or no?
Eight? Eight's fine. Eight to eleven?
Eight to eleven, that way if we run over, we still got eight to ele- eleven and then we'll ask the group at eleven if we wanna continue to twelve. But we'll plan eight to eleven on the fourteenth.
Okay, great.
Make sure Joe posts that, so.
Alright, that's good, we can do that, I, I feel, I can get a.
Does that work for everybody?
Works for me, yeah.
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 I think so, and then what we'll do is get you all of your versions so that you have a week to look at them first. And what I was gonna ask the town to do is to print them out so that you could come in and pick them all up so that you have paper copies and you could just bring your paper copies with you. And then we can just go through, we can go through each one and, um, you know, get, get them, get them taken care of.
Old school, Wendy says.
Yeah, let's do it.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, seeing the time, five-thirty, you wanna work, uh, see, we'll probably skip the discussion of the chapters and other works, although there's a lot of under construction right now, we can't even get into drafts yet, but we're in various stages, all of us, I think. We talked about the graphics and public engagement, that's down the line, we know that, um, I guess uh, what about that December ten date, is that something, oh, we've, we've got uh,
We have a workshop instead of.
The workshops, the Saturday, the fourteenth, um, we're gonna get information uh, back on the uh, economy on the second, I believe, right?
Yes.
December two.
Right.
Okay. Alright, so then our next meeting's uh, Saturday, the fourteenth, at eight AM.
About fourteen at eight AM, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
Um, no, well, just one note, I uh, put something on, on everyone's desk here and it had to do with farming, I shared this earlier with Donna and Chris, I'll send you a copy of it too, um, Donna and I both, both reached out to farmers, we had informal um, dialogue with them, uh, but, so this is kind of like an overarching set of ideas, it's not formatted for the plan, but um, just, you know, eyeball it and see if you're comfortable with it going forward because didn't have, um, we didn't have a lot of interview data.
Okay. Anything else, by anybody? Motion to adjourn?
Smooth.
Second?
Second.
Alright. I'm done.
And Wendy, you don't have to be super specific with the notes, just talk general discussion of timeline or there, I wouldn't go crazy.
Thank you.
You got all that?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Topic's hot stuff.
Oh boy.